So it said, I think he already did it and then just deposited and so you didn't have to.
Oh, exactly. So that live streaming as well.
Yes.
It should be.
Well, we'll call meeting the order and scramble for the pleasure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for.
Thank you. We have any additions between the agenda? Good thing.
I'm just trying to think the last time you picked me up the auditor at our last meeting. Did we know that?
Yeah.
We didn't know?
You bet.
So no, I guess not.
Uh, water board check. Karen?
Um, I'll just give a little update on JD.
Amy?
No.
I'm going to work.
I guess I'm going to bring up some issues of climate control and. So do we have a motion? We won't have the regular amendment because most, you know, just have to approve the monthly bills, approve the gaming permit for JR softball. Uh, addition to the gentle consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Do they retire?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go from there. Employee sign. Over here. Okay, we'll move on to Jason. Morning.
Good morning.
Just a couple items for you this morning. Part one is a drain application we received from Gabriel Barnes. Let's do, you know, a drain, a little bit of highway twelve. North of Pecito, that area on twelve A, that was an issue in spring. With different things, water piling up, not going places where it falls through. There's a culvert in that bin, in that that we are trying to get to replace last year that we're. Going to get to here in the next month. Uh, it's something like to help with that issue as well that they mentioned on their drain. Uh, I have no issues with it, the water board signed it at their meeting this morning. I'm just looking for your authorizations and signatures. So we can work with them moving forward on putting that drain. Only motion we could make.
Second.
In further discussion? Oh, Paul, we need to look at Karen.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Christie?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
So yes, so very.
The next one we had is uh stuff that. Shows the work that Tammy is doing as our uh safety risk manager. And making sure we work with the LMS system premium safety discount that we have and premium dividend refund. So with those three programs and the paperwork that comes with it, we were able to get checks back to us. Toning uh just over fifteen thousand dollars. So uh it's a five percent premium discount for being processed for the LMS for people going through training on a quarterly basis. Another five percent discount check for uh process for mail from premium safety account discount um. For maybe claims management, drug free workplace training. And then a premium dividend credit refund check that we received um for the safety and claims management. But it's so. Just more of an informal thing for you on that one. So I appreciate everything that Tammy is doing to make sure that's going. I really don't have much to do with it. Um, the next thing on the.
Could you hold on?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just just like to thank the employees who do participate in that. I mean fifteen thousand dollars is nice.
Yes.
Nice chunk of money to get back because they are doing the required training, so just wanted to go to be noted that it is appreciated.
I will pass that information on. Uh, the next one is everyone can feel it in the room today is the courthouse HVAC. It is obviously not working, our two new bearings that we just replaced to two hundred thousand dollars, one of those bearings is already gone. The bearing is sitting in my office for for its replacement. But the shaft that runs the impeller for all our cooling system though is bad. They are not able to find a shaft for it. They're trying to find great steel so they can have one made for us. The other thing they're looking at possibly having to do is take our shaft out. We'll have it welded and milled and do everything else. Uh, as of yesterday, we're still trying to find things, I told my team. Just do what you needed to do to get us up and running. And this morning I reached out to them via text and phone and I haven't received anything back from them.
Is it a chance of control?
No, this would be customary, but those are standard. They do all our our repairs and the things that are contracted. People for um maintaining our system.
Is it hard to get the shaft going?
It's not going to be really easy. So it's upstairs in 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 attic space of I they had the bearings and everything out. The last time they did the bearings, it was a four hour ordeal for them to do it. So uh they're taking a look at everything they have, so.
The shaft is on. On the water pump or or?
No, it's the shaft is on the air hammer, so there's a big centrifugal fan that is up there. It's about a three foot diameter and that's what pushes all the air through there, the water cooling pipes and on that. This is what we get, high humidity and mild movement from the air. Um, second, third floor were eighty degrees yesterday by this time and it's not going to end this morning, they're right back to it. So it's pretty miserable for everybody in the on the place, the first and the second floor for working conditions.
Just so why it should be that complicated? I don't know if they could jerk the shaft real quick hills used to build them up and turn it down. Probably be the quickest way to get it fixed, so they do it all the time, yeah?
Yeah. And so we're just, we're trying to work through, through, but the marriage is done. So I have calls into them this morning and haven't written back from them yet. So.
Anybody else here?
We just stay out of doing ourselves too, I guess, but I was trying to leave the guys out on the road and doing other things.
Well, given the forecast, I think it's kind of.
Yeah, that's why I'm definitely. Why I'm pushing on customers and on on things yesterday and today, you know, we sort of. I've had a feeling that hit him up to ask for more information to see where they're at, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, I mean, I guess I feel too almost like if we don't hear anything back, we just need to proceed with something. Cause you can't have employees working in this. And I'm almost questioning, do we need a backup plan for the, I mean, I'm hopeful if that shaft is fixed, then things will be fine the rest of the summer. But if we keep this summer going like it is, this is not usually our warmest fun.
Um.
You know, just from a perspective of an emergency situation, you know, do do we utilize the top floor and regional council or do changes there on in that chase building? To be able to give options for our employees because otherwise, I mean, they need to go home almost. That that's not acceptable working conditions in my opinions to keep people here. So I'm just trying to think outside the box a little bit on are there areas where people that need to be in to make things a little bit more comfortable for them? And I don't know what that third floor is like, we've talked about it before, we have to replace carpet or something, but just to give. Some options when we're dealing with this building and the issues that it has between both air and heat. Because we're not going to have a quick fix, so we have to think of some things to do.
Do most of them still have computers? Like when we head over, a lot of them work at home, I mean, if it's not that bad, then yeah, they will go home and.
When I worked there, I think they all sent their computers home with them.
Well, that's I don't want to open it up, but that's a that's a, I don't, I don't know how many laptops. We have, I think the zone is based off of laptops, so I don't, I think they're all towers, I don't know of any of any laptops that are set.
An option there?
I'd be like our office, we've got one. It's a tablet. And I don't know what they have for network connections over there. That's a whole entire.
Right.
Oh.
They'll have to be connected to the server and to the network.
Yeah, no, no, who's in their offices and who's out or what timeframe they're coming in and out as well.
Well, that can be easily found out and.
I mean, it maybe isn't overnight, I'm just saying, do we need to think forward in having a secondary option for our employees?
I mean, a secondary option for. Who's ever servicing this stuff, is there anybody else besides customer, nobody?
No, no, it's wants to start our system. There's nobody local that wants to do it, we've had lin foot up here to look at in the past and they just kind of put their hands up, so.
Oh, maybe we should go office by office and see what what can be done and. Over there, and I mean, we can't do it during the meeting or anything, but. If we give them permission to say, you know. Let's move over for a few days or whatever.
I see this as a seasonal.
Well.
Seasonal long adventure.
It, yes, oh yeah, it could be, yes, but.
Totally good.
Right. But I mean, we can't solve this now by, we could maybe just. Have somebody.
It does a shaft issue and we've got guys like we pull up and do it, when it works, it works, I was wearing a code last week.
Yeah.
And death was sixty two, so when it works, it works, it's just. Long as we have the other right now, or at least for mine.
Maybe we pull somebody and get it fixed.
Yeah, I I agree.
He was saying yesterday, it's it's getting iffy, bleeding the roads, pull somebody and as it's drying off the blades or something for now and just get this fixed, yeah.
I agree. And Mr. Chairman, just from what I remember about the laptops, there wasn't one for employees, there was one per department, I think, is what we had approved back then. So we don't have enough laptops for all the employees to stay at home. The other thing is is. I agree, it'd be really nice to have a another area for them to go. But you don't just take your laptop, you know, it's all the files in the courthouse, it's it's so much of the work is right in the courthouse. So I feel like we need to figure out if we're going to do an alternative plan, I feel like we need to figure out an alternative plan within the courthouse so the employees can stay. So like can do, I mean, I don't want to say window air conditioners, but what what do we come up with so that it's?
That.
You know, better working conditions?
That brings me to the next problem is electrical.
Is it going to hold it on?
The electric, I don't believe the electrical hold it on, when we have people running two heaters in the winter in their offices, we're we're bottom breakers. So we're we're back to the antiquated systems that we have inside of buildings.
And and I fully agree, we need to get moving on this system, on getting the fifth on the system, but I mean, until then, like what do we do? Because I think it's easier to stay in the courthouse and try to figure out a way to get some, yep, get some air in here than trying to get employees to move. Because you can't take your need books, you can't take so many of the things that they need on a daily basis. Um, but I am in full support pulling guys off the highway and let's get the shaft fixed and get employees in there.
No, for the bits coming out, they're up to the.
Well, Johnson Controls is working on that proposal they had, they're fine tuning it again, and they're hoping they they had something for us for the next meeting. See if we want to move forward, I'm actually going through the the finalized design criteria, so we can go through the bids. Well, obviously if we decide not to do the project, they're going to want to get paid for the work that they do for doing the designs. So far, everything else with the concepts that they've come up with has not been at a cost for us. But you know, it's at this point in time, we we need to decide if we're going to move forward, they're putting another plan together. John's working over what he had submitted to us last time. Um, but we'll have to address that and see where where we want to go with that. I know there's some people that think we need to hire an architect to do it, but. If you hire an architect, the architect's going to hire a mechanic or engineer who's going to do everything that Johnson Controls already done, you're going backwards. We can take care of aesthetics as we go through with our architects, you know, opinion. So.
The fall, the fall to get to the point of this RFP or a mind missing, so.
No, with Johnson Controls, we we signed that, we signed the agreement that they had give, they had brought to us the last last commission meeting. When John Paul is here from Johnson Controls, they can start working on all the construction plans right now. And then we get, when they get their construction plans set for the final design and all that stuff, then we can go to bid. And then we can get their prices to see what's actually going to cost for replacing the meeting in current system. And we're we're wanting to do the the minimal amount of ADA which would get rid of the finding your mom in the basement. So.
But you said John Paul is going to want money, you know how much money we're talking or I don't like what is something.
Five percent is the standard that most contractors are looking for in projects, so if you look at. Just throwing numbers out there, I'm not speaking for Johnson Controls, but if it's a five million dollar project, you're going to get two hundred and fifty thousand. That we would have to have for for paying for their time for their designing. Financing, if you go to architecture, you're going to have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus architect's fees on top of there. So they're trying to give you more than seven to ten, they're trying to go there.
Mr. Chairman, but we don't know that it's going to be five thousand, five million dollars, correct?
No, you don't know until your bid.
Yeah, so.
So I'm just, I'm just throwing any numbers.
Maybe we're just, maybe we are.
At the time, that was their best guess to mention.
And they had a lower portion to it as well, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully they get going and so. But John is willing to come up to the next commission meeting, we're working through these different things, he and I have been talking, so. Um, if we don't need to, if you just want to sign that proposal that they had given us before, we can do that, we just move move forward.
How much more info is he going to give us than what he gave us before?
Not much.
Yeah.
But before he was including more than what we actually okayed up the last meeting, the last meeting, we just were kind of talking, let's do the HVAC, right?
Yeah, we the ADA was part of that five, so if we dropped that portion and took the other plans, you have a scale, a possibility to scale that back, yes.
That's what I understood, we approved that last meeting.
Well, we didn't.
We didn't really. We could talk about.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I would like to know what it's going to be without upgrading all ADA, maybe we just can't get it all done at this point.
And.
Maybe there's some grants or something in the future where we can help to do the FBA.
There are some necessary grants that are available for all of it right now. So we probably have to, we can submit for those at the same time when we move forward for the rest of the money.
No.
You're working on it. Okay, so do you want me to bring Johnson Controls in or you want? At the next meeting and drop the ADA portion or do we? Then move forward and just have them start doing the construction so we can move on from this or what where are we looking at?
Maybe drop the ADA and have them come in and talk to us.
Yeah, you might on the rest of it. Okay, I'll do that now, come in here in twenty minutes. Okay. Can do that, and then the last thing I guess I had for you was uh LEC locks. One of the main doors, it had problems with bringing in installing security to adjust the door. Um, what they actually came up with, I'm not sure yet, so I don't know how much that's going to cost, the amnesty life and order was going on it. And special torque heads, and when we started opening it up and found that the special safety torques were. Um, stripped out and we weren't going to start drilling and buying things that we could close up without any of the security company around, so. That's where we left that last Friday and they were coming up and working on stuff, but I haven't, they don't touch base with Adam for how they've done and what they've done or run, so. I saw the stolen strap was here, but that's as far as I got for today. For that, I guess I don't have anything else unless you have anything for me.
You want to even mention about the water study going on fifteen? Um, just to let them know that there is one doing, you think they get some treatment?
Yeah, they're going to be, so there's a a complaint that's been filed with the water board. In regards to uh intersection between it county of fifteen and county of eight, uh three miles south, mile and a half south of Destinville. Um, it's got different components to go with drains and drain tiles that were built in that area, township culvert. So they're looking at having to do a basic understanding is about two two square miles. Uh, investigation as to where the water is going, different things, and may have to address the culvert size of what's going underneath county roller eight. Now, if we put in that drain, that one where it goes in that drain, where they excited, say we have to upsize that. We're going to have to upsize everything going to these.
So it might affect us.
Yeah, it'll be a heavy go. Well, that's mostly due to tile drain pumps? It's spring, spring waters, um heavy rains, it's a lot to do there tonight.
That whole cluster in there is is a mess, yeah? And it's just, you know, it affects us for how many times it takes, eight. So that's, it's not costing us the study, the water board stuff, they're going to do it, and it's it's, I think it's a good deal, but if like in the wrong one. My question was was, okay, so now you do the study, who pays for this because that additional water is coming, you know, so.
But all these tile drain pumps. This is what's going to keep on going.
And and it's a touchy issue between farmers up there and to me, the water should stay on the north side of the road instead of the south. But now Prairie Center located to go to the south. So now you got more water coming there and what happens, I brought it up, it's a little big, so we get flooded and all of a sudden the pumps are getting cut off, we're going to have more trouble there. So that's, they sort of talked about doing a study on the the pullets down there, and I said, well, now we're opening the counties all the way east. I mean, that water and it shows a good drainage and they they got there, that water should stay on the north side and go toward Destinville to drain eighteen.
You couldn't show us that or anything?
It's right on, right, right.
There's Destinville.
Oh, right there, okay.
So where we get water and everything and and.
There's this.
It's been kind of a conundrum for years, never been.
It's basically saying this, it's. Twenty seven, twenty eight, thirty three, thirty four, almost thirty.
Isn't, isn't there been an issue though of something that was changed farther to the west earlier that's changed that flow that's part of the problem?
Well, it's. Yeah. It goes back to that, they called it a breach, so that water, sometimes it goes over, there's also water coming everywhere. My, Amy, if you want to know my, from my place, which is a mile to the south, we blocked that culvert and that water should be coming to that ditch also. We blocked it to help, well, so does, and now it goes that way and it's causing trouble over there, so there's a, it's not just this mile, there's the the whole area. It's people sending water in different directions that shouldn't be, and it's having an effect.
Needs to be evaluated and fixed, right?
Well, that's why we asked for the water is for the water flow or whatever you want to call it, they're going to do hydraulic study to do this and it might affect us down. Miles to replace, you know, I said for years that culvert should have been bigger on eight, but Brad so the or Brad Shannon, when he was getting water and washed out every year. So what good did it do that made that culvert bigger in the last year? Well, then when all the farmers did all the ditching and changed everything there, do we have to go back and size everything or I don't know? That's why we said do the study and look. Cause to me, either water should go north or there should be a bigger culvert there to relieve some of the pressure, one of the two. And I didn't bring it up, it was brought up by the farmers and I just, you know.
Yeah, water board depend for the studies?
No water board, you.
The Department of Water Resources.
Because, yes, yeah, so it's not costing the water board anything either, but but they have to want it, so we 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 do it, let us in the study.
Right, so if they do the study and they say it's a goal, it wouldn't cost us money that.
Probably, I'm just, that's why I wanted to bring it up, it might cost the county some money.
So at what point do we have a say in that?
I don't know if we do. Cause it's water and it's, once it can, once the Department of Water Resources gets it, if they find that our culverts do not meet the stream and flows. We have to adjust our streams and flows, we will not have a say, because we went in violation of the new flows and the streams that everything has to go. Now, every township road, so this study is going to be here. Every culvert on these township roads, the matches of county highway are the county's responsibility. So Jeff right here, and so you get to county from eight to six, you get. Three culverts that have possibly have to be replaced, and you're going to go down here where the water comes down to the drain and it comes down through Minto. So all that water is going to come down this way, down six, and then come across over here. So we could end up having to replace the culvers actually underneath six as well.
This could be a, it's going to be a how much million dollar project? I mean, what are we talking?
We don't know.
Couple hundred thousand.
Oh, a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, but my budget for culverts is sixty. And right now you can't find culverts that get, we had a culvert we need to replace that we can't get access to, so we're looking at other venues of a different type of culvert that we've never used. Just so we can keep moving forward.
The benefit we'd have in the county is maybe to keep eight from going under the flooding of here, that's the only benefit that might help us.
The only benefit we're going to have with it and, you know, we're going to have other costs for it for eight or six. You know, after it gets past past six, then it becomes a township issue because in the drains, that's the townships are going to have to, like possibly upgrading their culvert size as well. And what's it going to do with Minto like? More water?
My my question to them is if we as a county don't like it, can we fight it and push that water towards Chingle? And I didn't really get an answer yet, and I'm going to, I'm going on that water bar, I'm going to fight that, cause that water, yeah, it's not much. But it still affects everything in the three inch drain, but where should it go? North, towards Destinville, that not the the drain tile, this is all part because of that drain tile. And now there's going to be more water there, so that's why we're looking at a study if this all handled. And you could say in the spring, it ain't going to change with the drain tile, but you get a three inch drain out there, it's going to affect you big time. And that's my concern, because we already got it washed out when we get a three inch drain, now you have to, you know, the drain tile ain't going to be shut off, now you add all that, so I.
It goes through underneath the bridge, it's south of Destinville, I mean, it's.
Then how much water does even go there right now?
Right now it's dry.
It's from that corner going.
Even in the spring, how much water was there, not. So my concern too is is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but their townships are giving, can give permission for change. I mean, things have happened, so that that's my concern is if townships are giving permission, this is setting up future issues, big issues, big water issues. Because there's absolutely no reason water should not be flowing, when you drive through there, that looks like water should be flooded, nothing. That doesn't tell you something and then you drive south and you've got just it up to the brim flooded, you know, close over the roads. But this is happening because there are townships that are approving this to farmers who want to change the waterway for their benefit. So from a county perspective, that's in my opinion where this needs to stop.
Yeah, and that's that's where it fits, and and if, back when that agreement was made and that water and that ditch was cleaned up all the way from the curb going north to Destinville. That farmer stated that all four quarters, that's why I want to do it, will go that way. Well, guess what, now there's only three, because that that one quarter is blocked in every direction, so that's why the drain tile went, and I said, no, that's not, that's not right. It should be going north, so we'll see.
Well, I don't feel our taxpayers should have to pay for this if it's been approved by the township.
Well, this, of course, we can go back then, I don't know, until the study gets done, maybe we got enough that we're minimum, then it can change it. Then I would say then the local boys are going to go back to fight it to the marsh.
I would, but every grain tile pump that goes in.
That's not going to stop, so.
No, it it it's just going to keep going.
That's where I think we need to be a part of the conversation, not ask for the fact.
Oh, that's why I go to meetings, every time I see that, I go to the meetings, I'm just saying, and I. And Jason's been there, so and we are watching.
Drain tile pumps. You know, they they can go in, there's no.
No, no, they're, we don't have any control. Yeah, they could go, not even a mile or two, they don't even have to ask downstream anywhere. So. Just wanted you to be aware that it could be some consequences to the county. Okay.
I have a question for Jason, before this, yeah, I mean, I stayed on twelve B, I had asked about the pavement on the curves.
Yeah, I have to, they're getting smaller, that I haven't, honestly, I haven't gotten to it yet. I'm still looking at it and working on some other processes for doing some soil stabilizations and. Company that's uh that I've talked to, pulling up some more information so we can see about what we're going to do with some of our soft coils.
Okay, because I'm still getting complaints on twelve B and I think it's a, it's a shame what those people have to drive on on twelve B. It's a slimy mess after big rains, it's 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 not drivable yet.
And that's what, that's part of what that base one. Product is, it's wet and that's the only time you can really blade it, this one is really wet, it's super, and you can blade down the water.
Can we just bury that stuff?
Oh, I think we seriously need to look at doing something on some twelve B, we, okay, so this this was not your issue, I mean, this was done before you came, Jason. It was something that was tried. It's obvious, it's obvious, it did not work. We need to look at a new plan, I mean, these, there's a lot of people that live along twelve B that.
It's obvious, it's obvious, it did not work, we need to look at a new plan, I mean, these, there's a lot of people that live along twelve B, that road is heavily utilized between Fordville and Park River with schoolchildren. Uh driving it, I mean, we need to be proactive rather than reactive, we're gonna have an accident at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we need to look at reviewing something on there, I, I don't say I think, I know we need to and.
We have problems there, we have problems on Ford, North Capital. Uh County Road one, if you drive between eighteen and thirty two is nothing but a crossrail to basically the whole thing. Really, the whole, a lot of that stuff, the only thing we can do is work in our our right, work on the rightways. Take them back and reditch it. Trying to get some out of water and away things, the white, away from the road instead of staying there and sort of sweeping it. Um, we've tried a couple of things, from what I understand, talking to guys on twelve B in the past, obviously, some of that stuff didn't work, we gotta, we have to find a way out something else if we want it.
I don't remember how deep that was, but that's been a nightmare since we reported it, it's been supposed to be just fixed at all and been nothing but a pain. But yeah, look into it and if we have to remove it and go back to the old way and maybe, maybe drain tile it and and put some fabric in there, so that's.
And right, right, now a section of it, so.
Cause doing, doing tar or anything else ain't gonna help if you don't have a stable base underneath, so we gotta start with that base.
Yeah. Didn't we have one time talk about boring the walls of these crosswells, with that, all around that track, are we gonna bore them down?
I don't remember exactly what that was.
It's, from what I understand, they had put some holes through inside a couple of different places trying to leave the water from those crossrail. And it didn't work, didn't work, I'm doing it or move it to another spot, I don't know, by the time I did, instead of addressing the entire two miles, we just site spots. And honestly, if you don't get to do the whole thing, you don't get a drain, we're not gonna.
Most sets putting drain tile in even if it. By itself, if it can't get the water away from there.
And I realize that we have other county roads with crosswales in issue, but I do not believe that any other citizen in our county has to drive on the slimy road like they do on twelve B. And it's not drivable, it is not drivable, so I think that needs to be our really focus.
I've, I've driven on that road and ran it right out, and I remember exactly right, it was just a slimy, slimy mess.
What's in it that makes it that way?
The material.
Well, the material.
That we're gonna talk into.
Speaking of rightways. Are we going in that boss area?
That's the, that's the.
Is that?
I drove out there again yesterday. What I see for Vestigal is there's lots of things in the rightaway, to me, it's more of a planning and zoning. Issue that we're looking at now than just a rightaway issue.
There's no, I didn't continue Jason's name.
Right? The United.
Um, you got, you got one?
So, uh, the first thing that you see, if you look right to the left, there's an orange paint on the road. That is a sixty foot rightaway. The rightaway in Vestigal, according to the paperwork I have found, it says it's seventy five feet, on the right hand side, you can barely see the flag that tells you where it is. So the building itself, if you go to second picture, you can see there's basically about fifteen feet of buildings that is inside the rightaway. And it's not just. One building, it's basically every building, neighbor to itself, you know, about the same thing. You can go through the pictures and see where the rightaway is, um, there's one house, there's around like fifteen feet of building that's out of it. The first pictures that you see are all the way onto the west, until you get to the picture that's. Painted, uh painted, painted up, that's the last one, the other two pictures, the last two are on the east side, so it's. There's an empty lot across from, um, Bill Sands and Lee, uh properties up there, and then. So that's the only spot that doesn't have anything inside the rightaway, otherwise, everything else is inside the rightaways. Uh, when I say that the rightaways were established somehow after the time of Vestigal. So. Let's say, I, I think this is more of a planning and zoning issue at this point than just a rightaway, cause. I can't go after people from moving houses and buildings that have been there since before I know, and then their first one was I know, and it's, I looked at buildings, buy one of the buildings in the nineties to. Turn into a meat locker, so there's not enough change on that, nothing's added on since then, so it's.
I said, I went to get them there and kids in that one house, that's the last one with the newer one on the east side. The old house that used to be there, I think it had a fifteen foot sidewalk from the shoulder of the road right into their porch, and so, so it's. God knows how many years, before I was born, so, you know, I don't know who would have let it happen or whatever, who, did they have planning, looking back then, who was?
Mister Chairman, I um, I did visit with Kelly Cole about this um issue as well, just because, I mean, part of the reason I ran for commission is Nash was. As proud of Steve to me, cause I grew up and went to school there and it was sad, so I just do feel that we need to do what we can. To try to be proactive on this and prevent um a recurrence, even if it's on a smaller scale and. So I, Kelly had talked about maybe the zoning side of it, she just was made aware of a few things and so she's looking into that and. You know, even just if it requires a fence, like some junkyards do, or that we're able to establish something to be able to, I mean, the aesthetic side, our doc, she brought that up, that's another. Problematic and and I just, I feel like without doing anything, we're giving permission for this, in my opinion, bad behavior, it just, it can't. Be something that I stand behind as a county leader allowing. If we can, you know, do it.
Mister Chairman, I think part of it too is, um, you know, you you see pictures here and there's nothing out on the road or close to the road in some of these. Even though it's in the rightway, but we have, you know, the instance where it's like. And I drove by there the other day, could almost stepped out right into that camper, and so. That's starting to be, you know, a safety issue too. And knowing the history of this, it would probably get worse.
Well, and safety, I mean, Nash became, that can maybe a public health, you know, eventually.
Yeah, totally, yes. Yeah. And, yeah, that's what I was discussing, I guess, with someone too, with having this camper here. Is it being used, is it being, is it plugged in, is there sewer holes coming out?
So none, it's just being moved around in front.
Well, we don't know that.
I don't know.
You know.
I, I've been on, been in the same two times in two weeks since being moved around in front, there's no connection, so these pictures were taken yesterday, so I, I do know that.
Okay. Now, yeah. Okay. But that could switch.
Oh, wait till Kelly comes up with something that is some zoning. Proceed at that point.
We should probably just put this on the agenda for next time.
Yeah. And and ask Kelly to come if she's, yeah, able to, uh, do this.
Anything else?
On plan. All right, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Want to take a break?
Sure. Um, I don't, are we gonna?
Jason said that they are.
Ben? Send them a bill.
I know, I didn't get it, so I don't know. So, I don't know, I mean.
I thought he did the other day when I go by and I said, what the hell, cause on the other side, they both steed by us.
We seen both sides of the road there, they paid the bills, they didn't make grass, he doesn't see us come off, don't you think?
You know.
And it's just from.
Yeah.
But they, they got a whole head man, I'm so sad.
I would get over.
I don't know what to.
Yeah, for saying or what, for concert, you can have a receipt, etc., bill again.
And then bring out people, people near a, a bullet piece, where they're, where they're working wrong sign.
So unless that's.
What, what piece?
Yeah.
I would sign, I would, I would print that, that's national. Yes, and a part of that, you know, three years, send him a bill.
Um, I got, I have sent a, I've sent a letter, someone got letters, and I have stuff on six, I have sent it.
I don't mean treat dumb guys, any, if anybody else, everybody else paid their bills and got grassed in, yeah. Especially when you seed it, why would you wear it?
I guess we're not telling, we're not gonna tell them what to do, yeah, I did a penny. On the north side, for a pulse.
No, that was needed at the same time.
I was all seeing, they don't.
The guy was up there when they were seeding it, so I did one side.
It's not a really good stand, yeah, but. They planted the wrong kind.
Right, and then Sarah, I think had some stuff that she didn't go with, uh, hopefully, that took three years before actually paid.
Well, anything gonna come if you keep working it, you look at.
Well, when you, when you're, when you're on the culvert, you're constantly bump it up to four inch flats, that is not gonna work.
But you don't get that, see, when you look at nobody, when you just get, so I'm gonna be. Yeah, we were looking awesome, I thought it went out, yeah, we didn't, but it's grassing, I mean, it's.
Yeah, he's, he's a little.
Would need. I, I got. Man, I was thinking.
Like this was gonna go off.
Like, yeah.
Fifteen, twenty, thirty, fourteen, someone on nineteen is, nineteen eight, so nineteen eight, and Chris is. So.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're, they're funded, send them a bill, so I'm just gonna send them letters and tell them about this, well, they have to have, even alone, this will have to find about.
Cause they already got cross there, so, I wonder if we make them rip off the rest. I know, they're. No, but they'll, we go there, but next year they experience either. Yeah, there's one July, they're a mass, they get back, so we can do the two years, all hunters going to these, and now these going north. We got the, the. That farmer's, and he just called it, he, and I, we got that for him, I said, well, I'm finding that, he says, it's a time. So, so parents would be going there.
Well, I don't, I don't. Yeah.
Okay, come up with cost.
I know, I was saying that, I was thought.
But, yeah, but I mean, yeah, it's, yes, I, I got like.
He can make counting.
Yeah.
Yeah. There are a few more needs for it.
Yeah.
Years, right?
Yeah.
Well, you don't look real overwhelmed.
You know what we're getting through, so, so.
Well, you're not, yeah, you're not afraid to call anybody if you need help, are you?
Uh, we're getting there, so I was preparing the treasurer's office, they've been doing a lot of helping, so I haven't been nice with them and.
I'm, Christie had said, Kate, I'm thinking Tanya's coming in tomorrow morning, I got an appointment at nine o'clock when I'm at, I got a quick eight, Christie Peter.
I just feel like short of round, they're just like, we're kind of excited that.
Going home. It's not where I agree, we're, that fellow Davis group, the other group that we're looking at with the chair.
Alright, so today is our designated time and date for at least the first step of county board equalization. Um, today, um, just kinda left it open to anybody who had any, uh, either. Uh appearances for protesting values or written appeals, um, and then two weeks from now, I'll give you the final report with all the values. Breakdown, so, um, just for the record for the minutes, I mean, you do need to note that nobody physically appeared to protest values. At least I don't think so, um, but we do have a written appeal from Luther Reber, which should be noted in the minutes, um, I believe all of you've got. A letter from Luther. Um, as well as the copy of the minutes from the local Dundee Township Equalization Board. Um, and then a copy of the, I think I put a notice, notice of increase I sent to Luther, so a little background. Um, Luther has been applying for a farm residence exemption for his property in Dundee Township. Um, for many years, he was qualified as an active farmer, and then lately he is a retired farmer. Um, a couple of years ago, um, his wife purchased the house in Park River, um, the, the deed in document is only in her name. It's not involved their names, it was just in Linda's name. Um, and so there's questioning about what Luther's primary residence is now. The township board had our equalization meeting, um, and I asked them, I gave them the opportunity to come to date, or submit something written, and they have not to this point. Um, but they, discussion with them at the equalization meeting this year, they stated that they do not see him there, they don't feel that's his primary residence, um. They don't feel it's vacant either because they believe that his son lives there for several months out of the year, um, so would not qualify as a vacant residence either. So the township board decided to deny his farm residence exemption application on the basis that they feel it's not his primary residence. Which is one of the requirements to get the exemption. So I informed Luther of the denial, um, gave him the opportunity to appeal and. Um, actually went and did inspection of the property with him, cause I needed to do a notice of increase for county board equalization. Um, Luther's been very cordial through this whole process with me, um, but he did submit this written letter, or living, written appeal for. Um, stating that he, he believes that it still is his primary residence, that he lives in this house as a primary residence, and his wife lives in the Park River residence. Um, looking at the property, walking through it, it sure looks lived in. And there's, there hasn't been, they moved out of it, in my opinion, um, it looks, looks like somebody's living there, um. Food in the fridge, you know, what else do you wanna look at, um, I did call the state tax department to try to get some guidance on how those want to move their primary residences, and they. Basically, owe me a check, you know, use our best discretion locally, they don't wanna, didn't have much to add, and they said, well. They said if the county commission decides to also deny this appeal, or deny the appeal and deny his exemption, Luther has the right to appeal the state board of equalization in August, and then it's gonna fall in their lap. To determine what primary residence is, and they just said they would deal with that when the time comes, so. Um, the, the township board, I talked to one that was not in the meeting and, uh, he was, he was under the impression that he was no longer his primary residence. But again, they haven't showed up today to state their case, um, I know, I spoke to all of you briefly about it, just to give you a heads up, um, you know, Karen. Has some, has some thoughts on this, I will let her weigh that a little bit, but, um, it, it looks lived in to me. I know we typically don't go against the city board, um, so we've got two choices, to either approve it based upon, do you guys know something different? That our township board don't know, or stick to it and deny it, and then let, you know, then it's Luther's choice if he must have been able to state board of equalization, and then that's kind of in their lap. If he's right, um, I am going to be curious how this new primary residence property tax credit that's coming up next year. How they're gonna handle their case if they, if they're gonna be able to each qualify for a five hundred dollar property tax credit as a primary residence. On both of their properties as a married couple. But that will own the lap for another year or so, you know, how the state handles that either, so. But. I, my bid in it looks lived in, but that doesn't mean, I mean, people leave their houses, they love it. You know, he's, Luther mentioned utilities and stuff, and there's a lot of people, they don't live there, they're not their primary residence, so to me, that's. Post office, I'm sure with the. Um, confidentiality, I don't know if they can tell me, you know, where's mail going nowadays, so. I've got stuck in a rock and a hard place, I guess I won't put any input from anybody. Karen?
Um. So Luther and Linda have been good friends of mine for a long time, and. I knew, I knew about Linda wanting to buy a house in town for a long time, and, um. What Luther said in that letter is to a T of what I know. Um, he didn't wanna move into town, so we stayed on the park. I mean, we, we don't decide how people live and where they live and what they wanna do in their, in their lives, and. I would be willing to. Go before a court to say that he lives there and she lives, she lives there and. Um, go as far as to make a motion that we, um, approve his primary residence for tax exemption.
Hey, we have a motion, we're second.
I'll second.
And further discussion?
Question, I, we've always went and stood behind our township guys and I don't know, we don't think can and we're here, so we. I don't know, we don't think Cameron's here, so we have these townships do this, that's, we do everything else and then all of a sudden we're gonna say we don't believe you. Uh, to me, it's between the township and Luther and I don't know why, I'm not doubting either one of them, why is the township questioning that he doesn't live there? There must be some reason. I, I don't, I don't know and yet I could see Luther's point of living out there and everything else, so it's hard for me to make a judgment here. All the years I've been on here, I don't know if we've ever went against the township. And that, that's the thing, I bother you hearing anything else, not the question of Luther living there or whatever else, why did the township deny this, is there some reason that we don't know? Another thing, if this is a big issue, why didn't Luther or the township come here, that's another problem I got, nobody's really fighting either way, we get a letter here. Saying Luther's living there, we get a letter, also information from the township that states that maybe it ain't his primary.
Luther did send us something, the township did nothing.
Well, but the township in their agreement said that they.
It's just their minutes that they have.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's in there and they made the judgment call, not me, not you, not it. So do we start not believing what townships are doing and then to go against them all, all the time, I don't know. That's my worry, is we've always been true to what the township and we've honored what the township do, now all of a sudden, cause of this. They're gonna say, no, the township's wrong and I don't know if they are, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, Ernie, you, you hit it on the nose when you said judgment, okay, they made their judgment.
Yeah.
And, you know, they can say he's not there during the day. Well, that's true, because he's in town at his office a lot, he's got an office in town, okay, so he comes home at night or, you know, whatever, and I guess. But I don't know why they made that judgment call for it, um, is there some friction between some, you know? And, and, and I'm not saying there is, but I would, I would go to court to say Luther lives there. And. The, um, township can be wrong. Even though we, we've always gone with the township. To me, they're wrong in this case, so.
And I guess I feel that Ed, you know, I trust his assessment, the fact that he was physically out there, you know, having someone that knows them too, uh, like. How much are the township involved in, do they see him at, at the residence in town more often, I mean, do we, we don't know that, but that also would have been nice for them to be here. If the Mebergs are paying a property in town and they have property, like, again, that's not, in my opinion, really our. Business to, if they're choosing to have two residences and, and occupying them. I, I think it's usually pretty obvious when someone's not occupying a home, so the fact, that's why I seconded the motion that Ed was out there with him and went through the home. And I trust that Ed would give us his honest opinion with that, that's why I chose that. Because I agree, townships, yes, we use them for judgment, but that doesn't mean that there's never a chip, an opportunity, we aren't to use our judgment as well.
Were you out there when the kid was supposed to be living out there, cause that's, it did look like it's living in?
No, I, Luther, I believe, mentioned to me, his son was using there like January through March, I didn't go out there till.
Okay.
April out of April, getting married, um, but, like, to your point, Ernie, you're right, we typically go with the township, so like. The job of the county board of equalization is to correct any inequities, so, I mean.
It bothers, it bothers me that the township. Need this decision and they're not here backing it.
And I gave them enough to do, and I gave reminder, as I said, even something written, it's better than nothing, I don't know, to this point, I haven't got.
They said, I live in town now, but I'll bet you I'm at the farm three days a week and everybody could say, well, DC stalled there. I'm not, I don't live there anymore, but, I mean, that's, and if the township's looking at that, they're doing it wrong. That, that's what bothers me, the whole thing, the township really doesn't have. Either way, backing or whatever the letter, so I don't know, it's a tough, tough one.
Their, their claims, they, they don't see him, how often they go, they check on that, I don't know, um, and we're not to dictate how a married couple lives.
Yeah, but exactly, I have no problem with getting that, just. Karen?
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that. Linda and Luther have talked about this for a long time, about Linda getting a place for them moving. So it's not new that they just, that they just decided on this and Luther's like, oh, I'm gonna stay here and get the farm taxes. Um, that's not why he's there, he likes living out there and, and to the point about his son, um. His son has a construction business, a very busy lucrative, um. Construction business, I think he maybe even pours cement, I don't know, you know, how busy they are, um, he lives there, just in the. He, cause he has a place too, I mean, just, he likes being out in the country and goes there and just. You know, like a snowbird thing, kind of thing.
I do have a question, yeah, since you, you, you're good friends of. So Luther doesn't stay in town then, he, he stays on the farm all the time?
Yeah, and I don't wanna give that personal stuff, but yes, yeah, I mean, he, yeah.
I mean, because it comes down to, is they have two residents.
Yes.
Where is he staying? I mean, how do we, how do we know, we have to go by you then, because I have no information, I have no college, I'm not all that.
At the bar, right? Yes. And I, like I said, I would go to court to swear on it, that's what takes most.
This is, this is a very neat conversation.
I, I hate even talking about people's personal stuff, right, well, we have to here.
I'm gonna be honest, coming into this meeting, I thought we supported the township, now I'm hearing a whole other story, you know, I'm hearing somebody who is a good friend says you absolutely know.
Yeah. Yeah.
That he is staying at that house.
Yeah.
Now I'm torn.
Well, and I, and I could go back to years back when I used to get a complaint, somebody would always, before we went to the soils or somebody and, and. He'd always say, well, my neighbor's playing less, but I'm paying more across the road and I, I always used to say, because whoever's doing the excess, he probably likes. Ernie, brother, and then when that does, and he doesn't like it. Well, and like you said, there could be some personal stuff here between the township, we don't know, it, this is a hard one. I don't, I don't like going against the township, but, uh, my feeling is, is, you know what, if you really wanted to write something to let us know, to help me out, as, as a commissioner. I can side with you, but, there, it's tough. And I don't like going against the township, but I'm willing, I'm seriously, can I show up here on this, but just, just fine, I don't know.
Well, the, like I said, the other option is to unite as well and that, that I'm gonna be able to state board if you choose, I mean, it's. In the states now, but we've never wanted, we've never, no, as far as I know, we never chose to do that either, so.
I'm just rereading the board minutes, I've done it about three times now when we've been discussing this and. They just say they just feel it's not his primary residence anymore, that doesn't really give me a, no. I need, I need something a little more solid than that, than you just feel it's not his residence because you don't really see him there? Well, then you'd have to be there all the time.
Well, that's been on my mind a lot too and I'm like, so somebody's stalking his yard because they don't believe him and. Well, whatever, I mean.
You know, and we've always been told from the state tax department that. Anybody who applies for this exemption is, if the onus is on them to prove they qualify. And I, I just, I emailed Luther that earlier last week, I read as well, and, but, how do you approve your primary residence? Invite people to come over for a week, you want to live there?
Yeah.
You know, so this, this is a very.
Well, when you look at the fight, Luther's provided more to us than.
And, and a lot of inputs, you know, confirming it.
I'll call for discussion the third time. If not, we'll call for the vote, Karen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, to approve it.
Approved his exemption.
Yes, yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
So, yes, open to Karen.
Well, that's all parties know that.
Thanks, Ed.
Um, the only other one I thought may appear today, um, was a, actually disabled veteran credit that was denied because. They are, that is no longer their primary residence, um, I did hear back from the family, so apparently they're not protesting that, so. Um, so next meeting, I will come with the full report with all the values, um. Ag lawn values were up five percent again this year, which I mean, you had to prove back to December, January, uh, residential values are up again this year, um, especially in the cities, some of the cities. So, commercials fairly flat up a little bit, but, so. Alright, we will, I guess, adjourn the county board till two weeks from now.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
You do a nice, cool job.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to other business, somebody gets here, I mean, is welcome, helping authority board member. Can you, Eric? Yeah, I think, uh, he came, we didn't have a meeting, we got one next week, but he came to the last one and sat in and we were waiting approval and apparently he said he takes it, so I would. I would make a motion that we approve that just a year round for the Walk Tony, helping authority.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? A further discussion? A further discussion, we'll call for the vote. Chris?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
So, yes. Red River stepping up and.
Yes.
Need more people on, coming down. Red River Joint Water Resource District, mill levy requests.
I mean, we requested this for years, paid one and a half, and I just had them send it up here when they talked about it at the. Meeting last, last week, so it's something we've done for years, trouble is, is if we get out of it, then we lose sort of our cult on the Red River and all that. So, we do, if you look at the list, there's some beneficial deals, you know, Hammy Dam, Fordville Dam. So, I guess, I should send it up here and with your approval, I think we should pay one and a half mils again.
One and a half mils?
Yeah.
Did you make a motion, Ernie?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Somebody else can.
I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we pay that one and a half mils for the Red River Joint Water Resource District.
I'll second.
Who's that, a Montrado always?
Oh, well, sixteen and thirty people, ninety seven, I don't know, I think we were, yeah, eighty nine something, I don't remember the exact number.
Down to your twenty twenty.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, they have it, it's in the front pages, and they know, but we don't, we don't know, there must be. Allocation. Allocation is eighty three thousand five twenty.
Okay.
And do any? A further discussion? A further discussion? That will call for the vote, Christie?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
So, yes. Open period? Okay. I think we've got everything covered on the agenda, is there anything else?
Red Water Board, you.
Oh, yes, Water Board.
For your information, I took a check down right before the meeting to the Water Board for that two hundred and thirty nine thousand and odd dollars. So that portion, that is paid, they were very happy to get it. So, and we're waiting for, I don't know, between Kelly and Danny Goxton and then new legislative stuff to announce around that rest of it.
The rest of it, which can still be the past stuff, I mean, we're not at a point where we're like, even in going forward.
It's the past, there's still some bills there and how much are we on the book or, or what, whatever, they're still trying to re.
Are we clear though on what we're doing going forward?
No, cause like I said, Danny, he still hasn't got that, I asked her copies when they get it and Sarah's gonna send me one and I'll, I'll, we're adding to you guys. Cause apparently there's a, cause of the two century code, there's a switch and they're trying to make it as one, so we'll see. Yeah. That's it for me, I guess.
Or J D A?
Yeah, um, so, you know, we've been looking for a new J D A director, whatever it's called, and. We did have somebody interested on the line and.
Pay them up.
Couldn't pay them enough, we wanted to work from the hole and whatever, um, so we're back in kind of the square one, we have a meeting tomorrow night. Um, to talk with Red River, see if they can be doing some work for us and go from there. But we, we really didn't have any good qualified people, so.
Talked on.
Yeah, it is, so. We'll let you know from there.
Good. Anything else? It's not well, Jerry.